Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 14th School Committee Meeting for the Town of Foxborough. We're here in Foxborough Town Hall, and as always, I'd like to thank Foxborough Cable Access for broadcasting this live and also recording it for us, which they do every week. So, thank you, Foxborough Cable Access, for your broadcasting and recording. First is open public comment. I checked the list just a moment ago. I see no one that had signed up on the list. I see no one raising their hand and saying, "I missed them." So, did you want to make an op-
Real quick comment?
Yes.
I have to come up to that mic, don't I?
Yeah, please, right there.
I'm getting used to being on trial.
I'm Joe Sanders from 400 Foxborough Boulevard. Dr. Burdos knows this. I said this before. I just arrived here this summer. I was working in Maryland substitute teaching, and I'll tell you, I've never felt so welcome as I have in Foxborough and in every single school I walk in. So, you're- I'm here to tell you that, and I really appreciate the welcoming I've gotten. That's it.
Well, thank you very much, and let me thank you, Lou. Actually, he should introduce himself as Lieutenant Colonel Sanders, 23 years of service in the Army. So, thank you very much for your service, and thanks for being here with us.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, thank you.
And happy belated Veterans Day.
Yes, yes, thank you. Next, we have approval of our minutes. I think there were a couple in the packet. Is that correct, everyone?
Three.
There were- how many?
Three.
Three, thank you. I think the first one was September 26th, our minutes for our open forum.
I make a- I motion that we approve the minutes from the September 26, 2023, public forum regarding the Foxborough Public School mascot.
Thank you.
A second.
Second by Michelle. So, motion by Mr. Canfield, second by Michelle. Any more discussion on the September 26 minutes? Seeing none and hearing none, all in favor?
I'm going to abstain, I was sick.
3-0-1 vote. Thank you. I think next are the October 17 minutes.
October 3rd. They were sent to you.
Oh, sorry. They're in the packet. Sorry. Everyone have a copy of them or see them?
In this packet. The 17th.
Just the 17th?
Yeah.
You can wait. They were sent- they were sent, the first two sent to you, and then later that, within a couple of hours, the next set was sent to you.
So, I think we'll pass on those because in my electronic version, I have 17 next. So, we'll catch the third later, which we just missed in the mail. So, thank you. So, we'll just do one more today, not three. This will be the October 17 minutes of our meeting here at Town Hall.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for the October 17 School Committee Meeting, 2023.
Thank you.
A second.
Second by Sarah. So, motion by Michelle, second by Sarah, to approve the October 17 minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor? 4-0-0. I should state that Mr. Ritter is not here this evening, wasn't feeling well, so he contacted me earlier in the day that he would not be able to attend. That was quick and easy. There we go. Next is our Teaching and Learning Highlight. I think we have Principal Worth and Ms. Pacetti to speak about our BEEP program. Please come on up. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, School Committee members, for having us. It's always a pleasure to present in front of you. I'm just going to back up a second. I think- first slide here. So, Mrs. Pacetti is a second-grade teacher at the Borough, and she was nice enough to present with me. I approached her about presenting about BEEP, which is our Borough enrichment activity program. You'll learn a little bit about that program today. There are so many wonderful things that go on at the Borough School. I feel like I'm always here talking about the wonderful things that happen during the school day, but there are also wonderful things that happen after the school day and before the school day. So, today, we're here to talk about our BEEP program. The BEEP program has been happening now for 43 years, not consecutively. There was a little break because of COVID, but I just learned this year, I didn't know that last year, 43 years, unbelievable. It has set the standard for after-school programs in Foxborough, and it's just unbelievable to think that it's been going on that long. Before we go any further, I want to thank Connie McLaughlin, who is our secretary at the Borough School now for 19 years. She has participated heavily in the BEEP program in organizing the event, registering students, making sure that everything runs smoothly, and our wonderful PTO for their contributions as well. They help financially and in contributions in registering and organizing and making sure that it's a successful event, advertising the event and so on. It's really, it's a whole team effort. Mrs. Pacetti is joining me this evening because she's been running the program as the coordinator for the past three years. I've only experienced it for one season now, so she can speak much more to the ins and outs and the details of the program, but in my short experience, it's an absolutely outstanding program. It has a long tradition of excellence, and like you can see in the pictures that we've included, it has a positive impact after school for many of our students. So, we're excited to present tonight about it.
One of the beautiful things about it, I think, is the collaboration with so many people that are involved in Foxborough. It's the PTO, of course, it's parents, but it's community members like Personal Best and some of the science companies, too. It's high school students that come back and want to give back to their elementary school, and now they are teaching the younger kids. And it's really nice to see the responsibility that they start to take on and how the children respond to them. And then I get teachers to do classes, educational assistants to do classes, and it's such a joy to see the kids have fun. I want them to know that it's not just a place that they have to come to, but they can choose to come there, and they leave with a big smile on their face. And that's why we all do it, I think, because to see them just like so excited. And it happens during a time in the winter when there's not a lot of choices after school because it might be snow on the ground or really too cold to go outside. So, it gives them a really nice outlet for whatever their passions might be. We have different classes all the time.
Last year, in the 2023 season, BEEP offered 20 classes and enrolled over 233 students total. That's an impressive number because our total enrollment this year is just over 250. So, it was an impressive enrollment for that season last year, and I know that we'll have a great enrollment this year as well. Like Mrs. Pacetti said, we include former students, current teachers, educational assistants, community members, business owners. Really, it's a melting pot of people from the community, and it's wonderful to involve them all in this BEEP program. This is also connected to Pillar 3, well-being, from our school improvement plan that I presented on recently here. Our strategic objective for that plan is to provide the necessary supports to ensure healthy minds and healthy bodies for all members of the school community, and we do that in part by continuing to offer all grade levels facilitated recess activities, clubs focused on developing student interests, team building, and good sportsmanship. This is a big part of that, and we're really thankful to have it in the school.
And one thing with that, it is not preschool is the only group not involved there, but we have kindergarten through fourth grade, and we really try to have equal offerings for all of those grade levels, maybe not the exact same classes, but they have as many opportunities to choose things. And that's a pretty wide span if you think about kindergarten and fourth grade and balancing things that they can all have access to.
Some of these classes are offered every year, and some of them are unique to the year. Soccer, slime, tie-dye, winter crafts, sewing, wacky wellness, American Sign Language, basketball, what's cooking, kickball, cooking, crazy crafts, cozy crafts, excuse me, STEM, jewelry making, Arabic name art, karate, math mania, floor hockey. Some of these will be offered this year as well, but we're constantly expanding. Somebody approached me recently about a Rubik's Cube algorithm class that I know our students would be very excited. Some of these are tied to academic subjects, and some of them are just part of that after school enrichment that really ties into that Pillar 3. So, like we spoke about before, BEEP is, it's really beyond enrichment in the school. It's a connection to the community, and as part of our pursuit to encourage lifelong learners and purveyors of knowledge in the community, we really hope that this helps us to build our capacity to fulfill that mission, and it also makes strong connections between our students and our families and different community organizations.
Is there anything else?
No, just they do pay a small fee just that we can pay for monitors and supplies and instructors to have some enticement for them to have that, but it's not a fundraiser at all, and so it really just kind of breaks even. I don't know the exact numbers, but that's the intent with what they charge on there, too. So, that's really nice, and nobody is ever not able to attend. We have scholarships and make that clear, and people feel free to approach us, and we've used those quite often. So, it's kind of nice.
Are there any questions that we can answer about this program?
No, but I want to thank Mrs. Pacetti for setting up, stepping up and reactivating this program. As a Borough family, we've been involved in a lot of aspects in this program. I appreciate it. I know how much work it takes to sit on the end that you're sitting to get all the classes organized. So, thank you so much. This is a great program, and I'm glad to see that the Borough didn't let it go. So, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
I'll just, so it was always the highlight of the year when the catalog of activities came out in my household, both for kids that wanted to, for my children that wanted participate as well as when they got old enough to actually help teach something. That was actually, I think, a bigger deal for them. So, I know what it does for the community and really proud that we continue to offer it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have two grown men that went through the Foxborough School System, and they both taught BEEP classes when they went through.
That was like the goal, right? To be able to teach something. That was, yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. I love the program.
Big fan.
Yeah, thank you for all your efforts in putting it together and connecting it to our goals for well-being and everything, too. You know, it's, I think when we put our plans together, when you put your school plans together and we engage about all of our school plans, we look for all of those opportunities that we can touch and reach into those plans to do different things. And I think this is the type of a unique program that allows us to reach in differently. So, I really appreciate making the effort for it. I think it makes a real big difference in the overall, what we do for kids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for spending your time tonight.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well done. Next on the agenda, we have our student report, but I know Nathan was unable to attend tonight, so I don't think we have any other information. He didn't send us anything. I didn't get anything either. Good. If it's okay for them, we'll move on to superintendent's update next.
All right. So, as far as my update, the first one that I have is really congratulations, and I'm glad that Ms. Frazier is here with her school improvement plan presentation this evening because last week of the Board of Selectmen meeting under Ms. Frazier's leadership, along with some of her other educators there, they were recognized by the Foxborough Commission on Disability for the Above and Beyond Award, and it was just such a great tribute to the work. She was joined some of those that really were critical in being able to achieve this or to be recognized, I should say, for this award. It's for individuals that are really improving the life, it's for recognizing, improving individual lives based on individuals with disabilities and what has taken place. And you've heard a lot about what has been going on, particularly in the last year, and what the Heron Middle School has done with unified sports. And so, they were recognized at the Board of Selectmen meeting by the Foxborough Commission on Disability, and we had Senator Feeney there and Representative Jay Barrows there as far as to present with them a certificate, and also in attendance with her were some of her educators, Barbara Gimba, Julia Schiebler. Kim McDowell was not able to make it, but Melissa Henry, who's one of our guidance counselors, just counselor, she was there. So, a lot has happened for the kids, and it has just been so rewarding but exciting for both, our students with and without disability. So, congratulations to the Ahearn and to Ms. Frazier and her team. Some reminders, we have a big weekend coming up. We have the musical that's taking place on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and that's Once Upon a Mattress. And that is, it's a whirlwind of fun and uplifting songs, and it's an updated spin on the classic tale of the Princess and the Pea. So, that will be taking place at 7:00 each of those evenings. One thing you could, if you want to pay at the door, you can do that, or you can go to Ticket Stage to get tickets for any of those three evenings. And then, one thing I did want to make a note as far as another event that's coming up is the Financial Summit that we have coming up on December 5th. With that being scheduled, I'll have to reschedule the Community Coffee Superintendent's evening, so that will date to be determined, but we will reschedule that evening because of the Financial Summit. Some other recent events that have taken place, well, if we talk about athletics for a minute, right?
Yeah.
So, on Friday, our girls' field hockey in the quarterfinals, that went in, that was an exciting game to watch. I know Dr. Donovan and I were both there and went into overtime, so they had such a great season, but were outscored by one. But they'd had a great season. So, football, we know that they are in the Final Four. They'll be playing on Friday night at Astabat Valley, 6:00. So, that will be taking place. I did actually want to address one thing when it comes to football because some questions came to me, and it had to do with their last game and with them not having the banner at their game. And so, what ended up happening is we had a representative from the MIAA, not Mr. Pearson. It was the representative that oversees field hockey that was there and brought all of that at the game, and it was put in the golf cart. And then the banner, which is not as big as they used to be, it slid between the seats and the golf cart. It was found yesterday, so people have asked, "Well, where was the banner?" We didn't know, and it was in the golf cart. It had slid down. We had the football, we had the trophies, but we did not know that was there. So, that was unfortunately misplaced and just, you know?
Dumb luck.
Dumb luck, yes. But I did, I know a couple of questions have been brought, have been asked, and I wanted to make sure to attend that. But speaking of continuing with the idea of football, the Thanksgiving Mansfield game, I just want to mention that we're going to be, they're going to be honoring military veterans during that game, and our Touchdown Club for football is providing white game jerseys that are going to be similar to like the U.S. Naval Academy that they'll be wearing. And then after that game, those are going to be, we're going, they're going to invite local veterans to the game, and they will be given complimentary access by their gridiron club in Mansfield, which is really great. And then both Mansfield and football players will be wearing their jerseys and named of a veteran who served in the United States Military. And so, again, they'll be wearing a white game jersey, and that's thanks to the Foxborough Touchdown Club for sponsoring that, which is really awesome.
That's awesome.
And then, I think-
Is that, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
That's Foxborough and Mansfield that will be wearing the veteran jerseys?
Mansfield is going to be wearing a different jersey, yes. And that, yes. And then ours, forget exactly what theirs are going to look like.
Okay.
So.
Awesome.
I think, other than winter sports registration is live on Family ID, one thing that's new, which is really exciting, is gymnastics. We had enough gymnasts to be able to go to offer gymnastics, which we haven't been able to do in the years it's been brought up and asked, and we just haven't had enough gymnasts to be able to do that. And so, I don't know, Dr. Donovan might touch upon that a little bit when he's up talking about other things school-related, but that's really exciting. So, but again, Family ID to register for winter sports. I'm hoping I didn't miss anything.
Lot of good stuff.
A lot of really great stuff. Yeah, but again, you know, congratulations to all of our fall sports teams, our scholar athletes. It's a really great season, and to see some that are in postseason play, which is awesome.
So great.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Thanks for all the updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, I see Dr. Donovan and Ms. Frazier here. Our secondary school improvement plans. Welcome. Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to share our school improvement plans. I'm so proud of the work that we're doing and really excited to share it with you tonight. As you know, the work we do to develop the school improvement plans is done in collaboration with our school councils, our faculty, the community. I'd like to take a moment and thank the school council for the Ahearn. We have Zach Diorcy, Kirsten Howden, Carrie Weston, Kristy Yankee, and Mike Weber. I think you'll also notice as you look at the plan, the collaboration that we've had with the district and with the other schools in the district, and the alignment to the district's Plan for Success and the other buildings' school improvement plans. So, you'll notice we're continuing some of the work on some of the goals and benchmarks from last school year, but tonight we'll highlight some of the benchmarks and goals that are new and that are unique to the Ahearn. So, before we dive into Pillar 1-
Yes, and so, I'd also thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We have a really wonderful and new group of members in our school council at the high school, so just want to take a moment to just introduce and thank them. Stevie Strachan, Nathan Erman, Sarah Ladoni, who was in that role stepping in this year, Michelle Pelusi, Mike Weber, Shannon Waslewski, Holly Geffers, who all contributed to the development of this plan.
Okay. So, we will start with Pillar 1, facilities and infrastructure. The strategic objective is to provide a safe, secure, supportive, responsive, and innovative learning environment for all students and staff. So, we started working last year to update some of our collaborative learning spaces, particularly our Project Lead the Way classrooms. Those are our medical detectives, green architecture, automation and robotics, and some of our coding classes that our students take in grades 6 through 8. We just wanted to make sure that those spaces really were more conducive to the collaboration and the real-world problem solving that's taking place in those classes. So, we've updated the furniture and the setup of the classrooms and the technology in those spaces. So, we're continuing that into this school year. We also are looking at the group spaces, those large spaces we have in each of the grade level hallways. Last year, we focused on adding sensory stations and calming spaces for students in those spaces, but they're pretty large spaces, so we'd really like to diversify what we're able to do with those and ensure that there's also some space for student collaboration and for some small group teaching and learning. So, we're looking at some more flexible seating options, including some desks that are movable. We can put them together as groups. We can spread them out more individually with the whiteboard tops for student work there as well. So, last year, our speech and occupational therapists, and they're continuing this this year as well, but they went into the 5th and 6th grade classrooms and provided lessons on how to access those spaces appropriately, how to manage their emotions, how to identify their emotions and self-regulate as needed. And then the other piece that I wanted to highlight is our Library and Media Center. So, we have such a beautiful space in our Library and Media Center, but it's ready for a refresh. So, we're excited. We have a new library media specialist who's coming in with some new, fresh ideas. So, our focus this year is going to be to develop, really reimagine the space, develop a budget and a floor plan, really what we'd like it to look like. But just sort of initial thoughts, looking at, you know, we have all those, that natural light that's blocked by those tall bookcases. We'd like to think about that a little bit differently, have some more flexible seating, some comfortable seating for reading, some spaces that are more conducive to collaboration for students, having different centers, maybe a maker space, just different opportunities for students to access the Library and Media Center in some new ways, really with the goal of, you know, some students love to read and some might not be as quick to pick up a book, but if we can really make this the hub of our school and entice students to come in and access the library, we're surrounding them with books, and hopefully they'll be more likely to read, so.
At the high school-
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please.
So, from a budget perspective here, I see there are three of them are in progress, one's completed, so we're good there. It sounds like the Media Center is a reimagine, looking ahead, start to envision that, so there may be some budget support and necessity in the future?
Yes.
Or, and/or currently as well? We're able to maintain some of these ideas in the current budget, but we may have to look ahead to as well?
Yeah.
So, just, I was just thinking that when I looked at that. I was thinking, "That seems budget, but I think we're good." So, thank you.
I think so. Thank you.
No, and at the high school, we are going to take a look at kind of taking the next step forward in our emergency plans. So, we have really strong plans that we've worked with Synergy 911 and how in a, you know, a serious event at the school, we have to secure, you know, how we would secure the building, how we'd evacuate the building, but really, the next part of that plan is developing, what do we do when we have to reunify? So, that scenario is when our students would leave our campus, go somewhere else to meet their families, enter that whole reunification process. So, in our plans, that's an area that we are going to seek to address this year at the high school and kind of develop that template that could be potentially used elsewhere in the district. There are some plans and programs and, you know, training things that we could do, but there's a really great program that doesn't cost any money, and the templates all laid out for how to organize the space, and so we want to work with our SROs because we know where we'd go and we know, and we need to figure out how to best run that environment when and if we're there. So, we're going to focus on that. We're also going to focus on, at the high school, we have, we're in the district, we have two real great communication platforms and Teams and School Messenger. And one of the things we haven't really done is extend, is leverage those as means of communication with our athletic teams, with our co-curricular groups in a real kind of like systematic way. So, that communication happens now everywhere, on tech streams and with all sorts of people in and out of groups, and ultimately, like our team communications and our co-curricular group communications should all be kind of under the hood and also should be in a way that parents can view it. So, Teams has added some functionality, Messenger has added some functionality where parents can see that, and what we want to do is work with our tech department to identify the best way and try some approaches out with certain teams this spring.
Okay, so Pillar 2, we have teaching, learning, and pedagogy. The strategic objective is to provide opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common, equitable learning experiences. So, we're can, I hope you'll see in the work that we've done under this pillar and really throughout the plan, our focus on the whole child and what we're doing to foster a school culture and climate that truly is inclusive of all students. You'll see that we're continuing our work with MTSS, co-teaching and inclusive practices. Last year, we had, we had a lot of coaching from Dr. Lisa Decker and Lori Kazna and our work with the Desi's Inclusive Practices Academy. Coming off of that work, our instructional leadership team really came together and worked together with their colleagues and their grade level teams to really define, "Well, what do we mean by co-teaching?" They came up with some consistent, common, school-wide language that we're able to use. What is co-teaching? What does it look like? What are the different models of co-teaching? What do we, really, what do we mean by it when there's more than one adult in the classroom? What is each person doing to support students, and how are we sure that that's working? So, they worked together. They developed really a one-page document that's titled, "What Hats Are We Wearing Today?", and it really just defines, okay, you know, "Which role am I playing? Am I leading the mini lesson? Am I pulling a small group based on data? Are you teaching the lesson? And I'm kind of moving around the classroom and supporting students?" And it also defines, "Well, what's the difference between a general educator and special educator being in the classroom? How does that look different from, say, a general educator and an educational assistant who's there supporting students?" Because those roles are different. They've been working to provide professional development to their colleagues, the instructional leadership team, I mean. They've led professional development this year at our PD days, at staff meetings, at our grade level PLCs. They're really, they're coaching their peers, so they're modeling best practices, they're conducting peer observations, and they're also identifying partnerships where it's working really well and really lifting their colleagues up and encouraging them to model those best practices for each other as well. So, it's really exciting work. Almost all of the teachers in our building have professional practice schools this year that are related to co-teaching and the work that they're doing to achieve that in their classrooms. We made some adjustments to our master's schedule to ensure that there's common planning time with all of the teachers. So, for example, if I have two grade math teachers, they have time with the special educator who- educator who is co-teaching in the eighth-grade math classes. The two eighth-grade English teachers have common time with the special educator who's co-teaching in the eighth-grade English classes. So we were pretty close to that last year. We're lucky in the middle school schedule where we have a lot of common planning time, but, but there were some gaps in making sure that our, our special educators also had that time with the general education teachers. As far as the common planning, our curriculum directors and our literacy and math specialists have worked together with our teachers to really develop some clear guidelines for what the co-planning looks like. What is it? What do we mean by that? How often is it happening? Who's a part of that? Whether it's curriculum planning, identifying enrichments or interventions that should be provided to students, looking at student work, analyzing data from those student assessments. So again, all tied to that co-teaching. We're also initiating a National Junior Honor Society this year, so the middle school version of the high school National Honor Society, very similar in the sense that we're hoping at the end of term one, after those report cards are finished, we'll identify those students who qualify in terms of their overall average for seventh and eighth grades, and then those students will be invited to apply, and then will be selected based on those four pillars of the National Honor Society Scholarship, Leadership, Character, and Service. And then finally, we're continuing our work with standards-based report cards. We're piloting this year in fifth grade in the sense that the teachers are really starting to work with the, the language around those essential standards that they've identified and making sure that they're, they are familiar and comfortable talking about those essential standards, that students understand what they are, developing and refining common rubrics and common assessments, so that next year when we roll it out, they're really able to communicate well with students and families about what, what our grading practices are. And then we'll be starting in the spring with our sixth-grade team to initiate that work to begin the following school year, so. That's pillar two.
Right, at the high school, we are going, this year we have greatly expanded our co-teaching, and so we are going to work with Lisa Decker. Our co-teaching teams, I think all but three are brand-new this year, so they are all working with Lisa Decker, and we've expanded both the number of sections we have in ninth and 10th grade and expanded our co-teaching model into 11th and 12th grade in a greater way than it had been before. The other thing I'd like to highlight is our, our scheduling committee, so that the indicator about creating schedules to support MTSS data teams, student support teams, and our building-based support teams, really comes out of our NIASC report. It's one of our priority areas is to evaluate the structure of our school and see if it's conducive to all the things that we believe our school should, should be doing and how it should be functioning. So we're going to start really a two-year project, so this year is going to be really kind of identifying the why of what it is we want to do and why we want to do it, and then also to kind of identify all of our external kind of constraints, whether it's shared staff with the middle school, times of day, materials, classes, do we have enough staff to do, you know, proper changes and figure out what that is, what those are, excuse me. And then over the summer, we're really going to start to kind of build with our goals in mind, so that next fall, we're coming back with a, with a draft of what, what a revised schedule could look like, if indeed we determine at the end of that first part that that's what we need to do. So, and then spend a year really kind of taking that plan and ripping it apart and finding where the holes are and making sure if we're saying that we're going to add programming, that that programming exists before we start, so that we go into the, into the summer of '25 knowing what will happen in the fall.
Pillar three is well-being. The strategic objective is to provide the necessary supports to ensure healthy minds and healthy bodies for all members of the school community. So our mental health team is continuing to work to analyze the data from panorama surveys as well as other student data, attendance data, grades, classroom observation data to determine the, the individual and small group supports that students need. They're also starting to work with classroom teachers on understanding how that, how the data and particularly the next steps and the lessons from those panorama surveys can support whole groups of students and where we can go with that, so if there's a particular group that, that's showing a need overall, that we can address that and really target it with that group. And we've been doing second step now for a number of years in seventh and eighth grades. We started this year in fifth and sixth grades, so now every grade level, five through eight, is having a second step lesson once a week. And this month, for example, the, the second step lessons are focusing school-wide on identity-based bullying, what it is, how to respond to it. We had a group of teachers work this summer to really take a look at that second step curriculum and think about, how do we make this more relevant, more relatable, more meaningful to our students? I think in some grade levels, it definitely works a little bit better than others. So they really did a nice job in looking at how we can tie in our Hearn Constitution that was developed by our students last year into our second step lesson, so that it, that what we're doing is really reflective of what we say we value. So for example, they identified in a Hearn Word of the Month, in September it was teamwork, in October it was respect, in November it's citizenship, really working with students to understand what those words mean, what they look like, what the expectations are of, of how we're really demonstrating those values from the Hearn Constitution. We're having a more intentional focus on the celebration of heritage months, for example, in September Hispanic American Heritage Month, in October we celebrated neurodiversity awareness, in November Indigenous American Heritage Month, so. Just a lot of, a lot of good work happening there with the second step curriculum. And then finally, we were here recently with our student group for the new student orientation that's really initiated by our web leaders and with some support from some of our other student leaders, like our student, our student council representatives. But the goal was, we have such a strong transition program for our fifth graders as they're coming into the middle school, and really it's a year-long transition program, but we've noticed we have a lot of students moving in, into our schools in sixth through eighth grades as well, and they're moving in, in the middle of the school year, and we were really seeing, you know, it's hard for students to change their schools in the middle of the year, and it's particularly hard, I think, for middle schoolers, and we're seeing students having a really hard time making positive connections and finding positive peers and really seeing how they could become leaders and really demonstrate those, those leadership skills that we're looking for in all of our students. So this program will be running once a term. It's really, it's about a half hour, but it's, it's a social opportunity with some really structured community-building activities to help the students get to know other new students as well as some of our, our student leaders.
Excellent, so at the high school, we have been working with our panorama data, and Andy Stravideo is here tonight, our director of guidance, and one of the things that our student support team and our guidance counselors have been doing is working on building groups and, and bringing in outside organizations to help our students develop skills, to deal with, to everything from, you know, problem-solving with peers and mediation to getting really intensive supports into, for families. And so this year, two big parts, kind of outgrowths of that work from last year is that our guidance councils have already started building groups and have started having groups with students who have like needs or pulling them around from around the building and trying to work, and we're using our panorama resources to do that. And another thing that, that Mr. Stravideo and the guidance counselors have done is they've partnered with our wellness department to begin to use some of our health lessons and our health course time to come in, push into those classes and better work with our wellness teachers to prioritize the development of these skills. And then to take a step further, with Amy Muldowney, who's our director of community wellness, she started in partnership with the guidance department last spring, bringing in outside resources. We partnered with Quincy Family Resource Center, with the SAFE Coalition, with Jen Rosenberg and the nurses with the MGH I Decide program to begin to try to, to bring in programs we could use for restorative discipline when it comes to substances like SAFE and I Decide, but most importantly, to use, help those organizations, help families connect with those organizations who can provide the sort of wraparound or in-home care or, or services that families need. And Amy Muldowney has been incredible in that work and has really, really dove into helping families and supporting families and kids, and so much that we moved her actually into our guidance office, so she had better access to kids from where she was in the building.
Can I ask about Best of the Bunch program?
Yes.
Did I miss, did I miss it, or?
No, well, so I didn't mention, so last year we created a, at the high school, we created a, we called it the Best of the Brunch, and it was, it was really a recognition breakfast for kids who did things which we don't have another way to recognize them, right? The small things that make a big difference in kids' lives or in classes, or, you know, acts of kindness to some of our newcomer families or to students, people who get really involved in supporting our Unified Athletes, or just the kids who come, who, when the class leaves, help clean up, right? Or help support a sub who needs some help on a day when they're there. So it was a way to kind of recognize those acts of kindness that make a huge difference in the culture of our building. So we invited parents, we invited kids, we kind of, I think we had maybe 50 kids that we recognized last, last March, and so we're looking to do that kind of once a semester this year.
Great.
And that came out of the work from the SEL committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And pillar four, diversity, equity, and inclusion. The strategic objective is to foster and strengthen the respect in actions of staff, students, and families to celebrate diversity, ensure equity, and practice universal inclusion. So we'll be continuing the work that we've been doing with the district's DEI committee. Like to highlight the student focus groups that we found to be some of the most valuable data and feedback that, that we really learned from in terms of what our students are experiencing in school and what they really need and are hoping for from their teachers and administrators, as well as the learning walks where really, you know, we're in classrooms all the time, but to be able to visit classrooms with a group of teachers and, and really be looking at what's happening there through that lens of what, really what students are experiencing, who's represented in the classroom, how are they represented, and how are they seeing themselves, you know, is every student in the classroom seeing themselves in a positive way? Our No Place for Hate Club, we started that really in like early spring last school year. We had three major school projects, which is part of being, a part of No Place for Hate through the Anti-Defamation League. Last year, our three projects were the Hearn Constitution, the Humans of the AHRN that I think we presented here for our teaching and learning highlight, and the Unified Sports Program, which I'll come back to in a moment. But really, it's about celebrating our diversity as a school, and it, this No Place for Hate Club is student-led, so I mentioned earlier the identity-based bullying lessons that we're doing this month in Second Step, but the, this group of students is taking it a step further and doing some extension work in our school around that identity-based bullying, and that they're doing some really great projects. Right now, they're in the early stages of sort of brainstorming and pulling that together. I think we'll start seeing more of that after Thanksgiving, but they're also, as soon as you come into the AHRN, there's, there's a large bulletin board that also highlights our, our commitment to being inclusive as a school through our Hearn Constitution and really highlighting that, that our goal is to celebrate differences, promote respect for all people, respect individual dignity, seek to gain understanding of those who are different from us and believing that one person can make a difference. We're focusing on professional development, really seeking out and supporting learning opportunities for our teachers and administrators to continue to learn and grow in this area, again, providing an inclusive, an inclusive learning environment where all students know that they belong, they matter, they're valued, and they're capable of success here. We're dedicating our grade-level meetings to focusing on self-reflection on our, our own identities, our biases, and how those impact the ways we interact with our students, their families, our colleagues. And then finally, Dr. Bardo's mentioned earlier, Unified Sports. We're excited we were designated as a Unified Champion School this school year, which means that there, there are three areas you have to demonstrate that you're, you're committing to fostering an inclusive environment for all students. So one is that you have Unified Sports, another is that you have a friendship club at the middle school level, which is really the equivalent of a best buddies club at the middle school level, and that there are school-wide opportunities to celebrate differences. So we had a pep rally last year for our Unified Sports. We have some inclusive student leadership opportunities. Every game, we have the stands full, we had a fan bus that, that came with us to the away games. We started this year, we added the Unified Bachi Club, we had our tournament at West Bridgewater a couple of weeks ago with six other districts from around the eastern part of the state, and in talking with the coaches and the staff who are supporting Unified Sports, we said, you know, there's, there's a pretty big gap between the end of the Bachi season and the start of the basketball season for us, which is March. It starts after the, the regular basketball season has finished, so we're, how, how can we keep the momentum going? So the coaches are starting an additional club that's going to focus on supporting continued participation in some more informal sports with the students, and also maybe they surveyed the students on what their interests would be, so we have some students who really love to cook, so they're going to do some cooking together, some arts and crafts, some games, and some other activities, so we're, we're excited about that.
At the high school, one of the things we're working on this year is, and I mentioned it a moment ago, is trying to bring some more restorative practices into our school-based discipline, so that is certainly a conversation that's happening in the district's DEI committee, and so we're going to, or doing, we're starting our work in conjunction with that, but looking for more ways in which we can, can bring those practices into not just discipline, but in our building as a whole. I'd also like to highlight the Community Cousins Program, which is part of the, which is an effort this year by Ms. Wiley and the schools to create opportunities and partnerships between students in our MECO program and families here in Foxborough, so that when there's an hour or two, that they have a place, they have a place to go between activities. At the high school, we have a lot of, you know, our, our students in the MECO program are really incredible students who do, just to be here every day, they spend an extra hour and a half on the bus each way, getting to the bus and then getting here and then getting back to school. We have a number of students who are in the program who are student athletes, which means they're here until 6:30 every night waiting for a bus, and their parents are coming out and getting them from games, and, you know, to be a student in that program is a, is an incredible commitment on their part and their family's part. And so the Community Cousins Program is really an attempt to support those kids from the time they're in middle school all the way through high school, so that we don't have kids, you know, at the high school, sitting on a bench for two hours waiting for the bus to come. So that is certainly a priority for us, and then, you know, as Ms. Fraser said, our Unified Program, so at the high school last year, we kind of fell into Unified Basketball, and it was awesome, and that became Unified Bachi in the winter, and, and then we went into the spring with Track, and we had long had a Unified Track Program, but last year, we had significantly more kids involved, and then one of the, one of the coolest days of the year by far was our K to 12 Unified Track Meet at the high school, where we had students from all over the district who were there, and it was really an incredible day, and we had about, I think, 60 to 70 high school students who were helping to facilitate the, you know, the races and the different activities. So those are, those are priorities for us, and they kind of happened organically, and we really want to focus this year on making all of those activities and programs key parts of the experience at the high school, and we had our Fall Pep Rally a couple of weeks ago, and the first team up to present on their season was our Unified Basketball Team, and we want to continue to make those programs not, not outliers in our building, but really core to the experience for all kids. And that's it.
Any questions from anyone?
I don't, I guess the question is, when do you sleep?
I know.
Right? I mean, no, you know, these are always really interesting, and I hope that these are the kind of things that our community takes interest in and follows along with the progress and the improvements that are happening in our schools. I mean, it's, it's really easy to get tied up in the stuff that maybe we can see a little bit more, obviously, but this is the kind of stuff that really differentiates our schools and the opportunities that we provide for our educators and, most importantly, for our students. So I really thank you guys and the school councils that you worked with and the educators and assistants, everybody in the buildings that, that worked to make this happen and continue to move all of this forward for everybody that's part of our community. So it's exciting, it's, it's, you know, I could, I could listen to y'all talk about this stuff at every meeting, so I really appreciate the time it takes to come and do this, certainly the time it takes to do all this work, but it's exciting, and, and I hope that everybody that either reads the minutes or watches these meetings, either live or video, really takes note of the work that you guys are doing, because it's really remarkable, and I'm so grateful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, sir?
Thank you.
You nailed it. I was, I was thinking the same thing, so I just want to echo what you, what you said there. It's so, I know there's only two building principals here now, but we've had five come before us, so you're the end, end of the game, but I really hope people listen deeply to what this is. to what this is about. These are some really critical, important, difficult things for a district to do. So I appreciate all the school committee, once again, for paying attention to really important things, and you, and you really going deep with this. When we talk about what our buildings are doing around facilities, but then all the teaching and learning is all the efforts that the teachers are doing, right? PLCs, MTSS across the board, K-12, and then we get into well-being and in diversity and equity inclusion, which are also deep, deep topics as well, too. So just thank you, right on, you nailed every single bit of it. I appreciate you ending our time with the five, the five building leaders, but thank you all for your work, and Dr. Berto's, thank you for all of your leadership in coordinating us to move forward with something that's so critically important and incredibly difficult and attentive to do. This is really, really real stuff here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just, one of the things that struck me in thinking about where we just came off of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference, right? And Michelle, a couple of comments you said to me while at the conference and sitting there and hearing all of those different sessions and the work that's being done in school districts, and it was a proud moment for me when Michelle said, I just continue to think of, we're already so far ahead of some of the things that she was hearing from other places and the work that's being done and what we're tackling, and I, it definitely, the kudos to all of the building leadership and what they're doing, but it just, it kind of struck me, that comment that you said during that conference.
No, and I'm glad to see that we're not stopping, that every time you reach a point, and it's fantastic, you just keep going, and we just keep going, and just keep trying to get better and better, and that's what's going to make Foxborough great.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Well, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
And we do need a vote to accept their plans.
I was just going to say, we need to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Foxborough Secondary School Improvement Plans.
Do we need to do individuals, or do we need to do?
I think you're fine to do it together.
So second?
So motion by Sarah, seconded by Rob, to accept both of the secondary school plans for the, one for the Ahern, one for the high school. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's a 4-0 vote. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you so much.
And thank you to your school councils.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So next on the agenda is our MCAS Baseline and Benchmarks Report and Review. So I know we have a-
Like Bob Barker.
Yeah, I know. Whoever would like to come. I think Stephanie, you're going to lead the way on this?
Sure, sure. So I'll get us started while our department heads and curriculum directors are getting themselves settled. I do have a couple of big picture slides that I'll go through before I hand it off to them. I do want to emphasize before I get started that this, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into this presentation and the report. You'll notice that the, you have, at the end of your presentation, you also have a 20-page report. That's a good amount of data analysis that our department heads and curriculum directors have done. Beginning in the month of August, we begin to get data from the state, and they are hard at work the moment that that data is released to analyze it, look at how they did in comparison between last year and the year prior, and also match up that data with what we're seeing with our local assessments. So just to give you a little bit of background here, I may have gone to sleep.
It's because we're all looking at it.
It is. Everyone look away.
It's the same clicker that worked a while ago, too.
Yes. There we go.
There we go.
Here we go, I got it.
The right angle, I guess.
All right, so the Baseline and Benchmarks Report, it does focus on state and national assessments, so you'll hear us talk a bit about MCAS, about PSATs, SATs, and AP scores, but it also looks at our local assessments. So assessment is just a, it's a big part of what we do. We are informally, informally assessing our students on a, on a weekly basis, and what I, what I do want to emphasize is that those state and national assessments, those are good indicators for us to look at big picture trends, but it's really the local assessments that matter most, and that's part of the reason why our department heads and our curriculum directors have embedded some of that data into the presentation tonight, so that you can see how we're doing, how we're doing locally. This particular report and presentation also focuses on standardized assessments. So there are many ways that we assess our students, from informal check-ins to, to more performance-based or competency-based assessments across K-12, so it's not just standardized assessments that we're looking at when we're looking at student performance, but this particular presentation does just that. It does emphasize those standardized assessments, and part of what our department heads and curriculum directors will share with you tonight is all of the different ways that we are assessing our students and looking at, looking at their mastery of grade-level standards that expand beyond the scope of those standardized assessments. Let's see if the clicker works again. There we go. And before we get started with the data, I did just want to point out, you heard it from our secondary school principals, and you heard it from our elementary principals as well, just a few weeks ago. Data is a big part of what we do, embedded in every single one of those school improvement plans, all of those action steps, everything that we're doing to, to improve facilities and infrastructure, create more maker spaces, create more flexible learning spaces for our students, that's all based on data. Our work underneath Pillar Two, Pillar Three, and Pillar Four on DEI, well-being, teaching and learning, we're looking at, we're looking at data on a daily basis to drive our decision-making. It's a big part of what we do. A lot of what we've done over the course of the past few years through our Plan for Success is implement multi-tiered systems of support, implement inclusive practices, support the expansion of co-teaching, so that we can really and truly meet kids where they are and really support them in, in growing on their continuum and, and meeting the standards when, when, when they're ready for it. So a lot of what we do on a daily basis is looking at that local data and planning for interventions and adjustments to instruction to make sure that our kids are progressing appropriately. So it's a big part of what we do and not just the assessment piece. I did want to speak briefly to the state experience at this time. It is the case that we are still recovering from the pandemic, just to highlight a couple of things. Our grade-three students, our grade-three data this year is excellent. I don't want to give away any spoilers, I can't wait for you to see it, but our grade-three students, they did have a disrupted kindergarten and first grade experience, and I think we need to be mindful of that. It's also the case that our grade-five, eight, and 10 students, the state has seen a bit of a dip in our science MCAS scores, and part of the reason for that is that those science assessments are cumulative. So for instance, our grade-five MCAS focuses on grades three, four, and five science standards, so it spans the scope of multiple years, so when we're thinking about something that may have impacted kids three years ago, it, it still has an impact on that current assessment, because it's the first moment in time that we've been able to assess that. So this is the lay of the land in Foxborough at this, at this moment. Most of the data that you see, we pulled from the District Analysis Review Tool, it's the DART, that's another lovely acronym. It's public data, you can access this on, on the state website and, and see where those numbers are at. Those numbers do flex over time throughout the school year, based on when we're submitting to state reporting. So whenever we're doing our October reporting, or our March, or our June reporting, those numbers will adjust over time. So what you're seeing right now are the numbers as they stood in September and the beginning of October. The state has not yet adjusted the October numbers. One of the things that I wanted to, to speak to, there are two data points that, that I'd like to speak to, actually. One of them is that, that teacher retention dip. It's a little tricky to, when you take a look at, at that dip, to think back to, wait, well, what is this actually measuring here? Is it measuring the 22, 23 school year or the year prior? If you recall, last year, we talked about welcoming a greater number of new teachers than we have in years past. So last year, 50% of our leadership team was new, and we did have 22 new hires that attended New Teacher Orientation last year. This year, we have 21 new hires that attended New Teacher Orientation, so a little less, but we did have a significant number of retirements that year prior, so that's why you're seeing that number. It's just that it took a year to catch up to us before we saw that little dip, and it may not, it may be, not be the case that it's going to go down, it'll probably dip back up, but maybe not back up to that 92% for the following year. I also wanted to point out that at, at this moment in time, that special education population data point is, is actually lower. We are at about 18.95%, based on our September 5th enrollment data for our special education population, so we've actually dipped below the state, and that has been a labor of love for our district and our Director of Student Services and building programs and making sure that our, our students have everything they need in the general education classroom and really meeting kids where they are through that MTSS process, so we're real proud of that. And chronic absenteeism has been a topic of conversation across the state and in the media. I wanted to point out these numbers in particular. If you take a look, we are significantly below the state. We've not yet returned to pre-pandemic numbers, but we are significantly below the state. The state's continuing to talk about chronic absenteeism being an area of concern, and it's something that the Commissioner is, is frequently talking about in his updates. Just so, just so folks are aware of where that number comes from, chronic absenteeism is, is the percent of students that have missed more than 10% of the school year. So with 180-day school year, a student that's missing more than 10% is only missing about two days per month, and that is considered to be chronically absent by, according to state reporting. It's very important that our kids are in school as often as possible. We know that illness has happened, but what we do know is that, what we also know is that students that are chronically absent, that are missing more than 10%, there's a significant impact on their academic performance when you compare them to the aggregate. Okay, so this is the, the 30,000-foot view, and our department heads and curriculum directors will go into a lot more detail on these slides, but if you notice, the current state data is right there in red, and if you take a look at the, the three bars to the left for each one of those markers, we're looking at the past three years of data for, for those scores. We are noticing for the first time this year that our science scores in grade-five and grade-eight did dip slightly below the state. As you know, we pointed that out in our, we pointed it out in our Science Curriculum Review Report last year, that that was an area of concern of ours, and we wanted to increase opportunities for students to engage in science at the elementary level, and keeping in mind that, that, that grade-five science MCAS test is actually 2/3 based on elementary So a couple of things to, to keep in mind in terms of state trends. The state is showing a stabilization with ELA and math performance, we're seeing that as well in our Foxborough data, with a slight decrease in science. The state is showing improvement in chronic absenteeism, we're seeing that as well, so we are in alignment with those state trends. And another, and another piece that I think is important to note, the research shows that it takes three to five years for, for, for students to recover when there are gaps in learning, so when students have interrupted learning experiences, it takes three to five years for them to recover. That actually puts us at the three-year mark post, post-pandemic, and we're noticing a stabilization of those trends, so you can imagine that over the course of the next couple of years, we should begin to be seeing some improvements, or at least some return to some pre-pandemic numbers. This is also in your report, and if you take a look at just a couple of data points that we talked about last year, these are our ELA scores. If you take a look at our ELA scores, much like last year, last year, we were seeing greater gains in the upper grades than we were seeing in the lower grades, that's still consistent. We are seeing that we are actually 3% higher in third grade than we have been prior to the pandemic, so we're seeing significant gains in third grade that have surpassed where, where the, the state data is. I thought it might be a little bit more helpful to look at this as a trend over time, and if you take a look, that, that last data point, that last year, 2023, the little triangular data points, you can see that our ELA performance over time across those grade levels, in grade-three, we're beginning to surpass that 2019 data point, and then we're also seeing right between grades five and six in those upper grades, we're seeing our 2023 scores creep above our 2022 scores and start to reach that, that 2019 level, so all good things there. Again, with math, double digits ahead of the state across many of our grade levels. There we go. And if you look, still the case that in those earlier grades, it's, our, our kids are still catching up in those earlier grades, and in those later, later grades, a slight fluctuation there, but nothing, nothing alarming. We're still 18 percentage points ahead of the state at that 10th grade level. And again, if you look at that trend over time, you see those 2023 scores surpassing our 2019 numbers in grade-three, and then again, creeping up past those 2022 data points over time as you, as you move past grade-six. Our science scores are, are the scores that we are, we're, we're concerned about them, and we highlighted that in our Curriculum Review Reports this past school year, but we've identified that we really do need to focus on increasing those elementary science experiences for our kids. There we go. And also, if you look over time, you see that there's a little bit more of a dip in fifth grade than we see in, in grade-eight and grade-10. It's important to note, too, and I know Ms. Hendrickson will speak to this in, in a little bit, our grade-10 science exam has already changed from, from the, from the legacy test over to the new science MCAS, and by the year 2025, am I correct, the grade-five and the grade-eight tests will also be changing. One of the things that we anticipate happening with those, those tests is a greater emphasis on the science practices and less of an emphasis on discrete skills, and that actually is going to align better to our instructional practices, and it also will help our students fare better when we're focusing on the science practices as opposed to trying to remember a, a, an isolated curriculum standard from fourth grade and trying to remember the details of that definition as opposed to trying to remember the science practices. There's a difference in that, and, and our students will, will likely fare better in those revised assessments. So overall, we continue to really outscore the state. Our, our graduation and attendance rates have remained high, our performance on national exams has remained high, and, and we're seeing consistent trends with where the state is trending with those other data points. We do, again, want to, to focus on increasing elementary science opportunities, and, and the other piece is, we're, we're seeing that greater recovery in early literacy, consistent with the state. I am continuing to work on that in year-two of the ELA Curriculum Review Implementation. I hope I didn't talk too much. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to, to our experts, and I believe Ms. Hendrickson is going to speak to mathematics first.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me come and talk to you tonight. We, I am going to start with math and elementary- I am going to start with math, in elementary math to be specific. But I just want to talk about what we value the most in elementary math, and that's our pedagogical model of Math Workshop. And I can't stress enough how proud we are that when we walk in classrooms, you can ask any student what they're working on, and they'll be able to tell you, they'll be able to tell you what their goal is for the day.
I have to speak into the mic.
I have to speak into the mic. We're so proud of students being able to have choice, voice, and agency in their learning. That's what we value the most, is our Math Workshop model. In order to sort of support and inform that model, we need to use data, and we need to use it often. Because in order to pull a small group, we need to know what we're working on, and we need to know who we are working on it with. So we have a lot of assessment data in mathematics. In elementary, we have common district-wide assessments for every single unit and monthly mini-assessments that we use. And we do a lot of data analysis in PLC meetings and Common Planning Time meetings. We're constantly looking, I gave you an example up there of what we can look at, sort of at the standards level, at the unit test level, all of those kinds of things to help us inform our instruction. But again, it's that choice, voice, and agency in learning and that model that we're so proud of, and that really does speak to what we value. But moving on to MCAS for grades three and grade, for grade three and four, you can advance the slides. One of the things that I did want to just highlight was you see grade three at the top, you see grade four is the bottom. Grade three, seventy percent of our students are exceeding or meeting expectations on the math MCAS. We're so proud of those numbers. We're so proud of sort of the work that went in, starting in kindergarten. We talk about the grade-three MCAS as the K-3 MCAS, and then we talk about the grade-four MCAS as the K-4 MCAS. So we're so proud of these, of this assessment data. We're so proud of what we're seeing. We're so proud of the trends that we're seeing over the last three years particularly. The next slide, I just wanted to focus, we have a standards report that looks like this that we use a lot when we talk with teachers, sort of about, these are the individual standards in the big domains and clusters for math. I'm pulling up third grade here. I'm showing you that we are double digits above the state in almost every single standard and every single domain. I wanted to point out the constructed response. Our students, our Foxborough students were able to grab sixty-five percent of those points. We were eighteen points above the state. Constructed response are those open-response questions where students are really pushed to sort of communicate their thinking in math, in writing, which we believe is the true test of conceptual understanding. The fact that our students are able to do that and do it so well, I think really speaks to the work that Karen did with Empowering Writers Program. We're writing cross-curricularly. We're putting a lot of emphasis on how we communicate our thinking, not only just with numbers, but we know that this is sort of the way of the future. So we're just so proud to see that. So I wanted to point that out to you as well.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm happy to be here as well. If you can flash in all of those, that would be great. And I'll just kind of talk about everything. So with English Language Arts, we have a photo here of our FastBridge Assessment, which is our universal screener that we administer to all students. We also have a lot of additional common assessments for foundational skills for K-3. That's a real, you know, focus of our work in the early grades is that pandemic recovery with the foundational skills. So we have a lot of supports there for teachers as they work to differentiate and provide intervention for students that are still falling a little bit below the mark. We have additional common assessments for writing in grades two to four, based on our Empowering Writers Program that we just brought in. We're seeing a lot of promising results from. And then we use our PLC, our CPT time for data analysis and reflection, which I think the teachers really appreciate that time, and it allows us to have a lot of conversations about the curriculum, where the students are, and how we can help them to continue to progress forward. And then our literacy workshop, we've shifted, in the past, we had a reading workshop and a writing workshop, and we've kind of shifted that thinking around to a literacy workshop and really work hard to align it with the great success that math has had in their workshops. So there's really a lot of cross-curricular work that Noelle and I do together that I think we're seeing some good results from. One of the things I want to highlight about our FastBridge Assessment is that the incoming kindergarteners scored higher than they've scored in the past three years, which I think shows that pandemic recovery. It was no instruction that we had delivered. These are assessments that are done right in the beginning of the year, but just shows the kids are coming in with the necessary skills in order to be successful in kindergarten, which is just going to allow the teachers to continue to move them forward. And then that early literacy focus where we have a real commitment to the structured literacy in K-3 with our Foundations Program and an additional program, the Hegarty Program in K-1, to work on that phonemic awareness. I'm feeling really positive about the direction that we're moving in in our early literacy and some of the assessments and the work that we're seeing with more local assessments. We'll shift over to our MCAS and talk about our grades three and grade four. You can flash them all up there. Thank you. Grades three on the top and then grade four on the bottom. Our grade-three students did really, really well on MCAS. I think that, again, just reflects the pandemic recovery and how the kids are coming in with fewer gaps in their skill set. And so really, we're able to perform quite well on that. So I feel like that's a real positive step for us moving forward. The next slide will show just a highlight of the grade-three in terms of the writing. This was 2022. I know it's different cohorts of kids, but when you see that the district is seventeen and thirteen percent, and then moving on into 2023, anywhere from fifty to seventy-nine percent scoring on the writing. I've heard from teachers repeatedly that the kids came, retained a lot of the Empowering Writers instruction that they received last year, and they're coming in the year at a much higher level than we've seen in the past in terms of our writing. So I'm really excited about the direction that we're heading in, in writing on our MCAS as well.
It's pretty drastic, isn't it?
It is, it is.
It's very profound, actually.
It is, and I think it's a combination of things, is that those gaps are starting to be filled and that the third grade didn't have as much of an interrupted education. They didn't, as the previous, the fourth grade still had so, so much. So I think we're seeing some of that recovery. But the strength of the Empowering Writers Program is, it can't be understated, the consistency of language. When a student goes from their classroom teacher to a special educator to a literacy specialist, everyone is speaking the same, the same language. And I think that's going to continue to make a really, really big difference for our students.
All right, we're going to go back to middle school now and back to math. In the middle school, we have the same pedagogical model. I'm so proud to say, in fifth through eighth grade, Math Workshop. That is what we value the most. Again, we have common district-wide assessments that we have to have in order to support this model. We couldn't do this model without looking at data and looking at it often. We have our common district-wide assessments. We have mini-assessments that we look at. We use data all the time in our PLC meetings, in our Common Planning Time meetings. We use illuminate as well. I'm showing you a couple of reports, their standards reports. Those are assessments that we have in order for us to group students and make sure that they're getting everything that they need. We want to differentiate those small groups. We want to enrich kids that need to be enriched. We want to help remediate students that need remediation. And that's the way to do it, is through our model. So again, choice, voice, agency, so important in our Math Workshops. We talk a lot at the middle school because we have more grades there and there's numbers. But we assess kids, not for that end goal and not that number, but we assess them to instruct them, what comes next. Because that assessment does not have to be the end. It can actually be the beginning. And have that pedagogical model means that we can pull kids and keep on teaching. So we assess them to instruct them, and I think that's really important. As we look at some of the fifth and sixth-grade math data, you'll notice we are outperforming the state in both fifth and sixth grade. Our fifth-grade scores do show consistency with transition years across the state. Fifth grade is our transition year. Fifth grade has typically been the year that we do see a little bit more of a decline in scores, which is consistent with that. In sixth grade, we did have fifty-six percent of our students meeting and exceeding expectations on the math MCAS, and we like the shape of that graph as we see it moving from 2021 to 2023. And then for seventh and eighth grade, we had fifty-six percent of our seventh and eighth, of seventh-grade graders meeting or exceeding expectations, and they're leaving us at sixty percent meeting and exceeding expectations. I thought it was pretty interesting that our third grade, our bookends, three and eight, actually had sort of the strongest data, which, you know, again, speaks to many different reasons. But we were really proud with, again, the shapes of those graphs and where we're seeing things in 2023 as compared with the two years prior. I just wanted to leave us with sort of this last picture of, this is grades three through eight math MCAS. However, this is a K-8 celebration. These students could not answer any questions on that eighth-grade test, which is very difficult, by the way, if they didn't enter kindergarten and have all of those standards given to them by excellent teachers right from the very beginning. So this is really a K-8 celebration. The shape of that graph and how we feel about sort of math in general and what we value so much, we can see that being celebrated, being celebrated here.
Okay, so we'll shift back to ELA for the middle school. Again, this is a screenshot of our FastBridge Assessment, which I'm not sure whether, I've talked about before explicitly, but FastBridge is a universal screener that's designed to assess risk levels, so risk of possible future trouble. And so when we look at this, one of the things that I did notice in FastBridge for our middle school was that we had an increase in the number of students that were low-risk from 2022 to 2023. We want them to be low-risk of future reading difficulties. So that was a really good, a good sign that we have kids that are, again, retaining their learning. They've been in school post-pandemic, and they're carrying that learning from year to year. So this initial baseline assessment showed them with an increase in low-risk. The work that we are doing at the elementary school with Literacy Workshop is continuing to happen at the middle school. And I think that the, one of the greatest things that I'm really excited about at the middle school is this that Ms. Frazier alluded to, at the PLC CPT time, that there's a great amount of collaboration with the classroom teachers, the special educators. We have our developmental reading teachers that are now pushing into classrooms and doing co-teaching as well. There's a lot of really rich conversations around data from the FastBridge Assessment, and we're really able to target kids that have this risk level, that a some risk or a high risk. And we're able to really work, the classroom teachers and the reading teachers and special educators are able to work together to really provide some interventions for these kids. So the FastBridge data is exciting to look at. Our second piece of data that we have in addition to MCAS at the middle school is our Common Lit Standards-Based Assessment. And so this will assess kids three times a year at end-of-the-year standards. So in the beginning of 2022, there was an average of fifty-nine percent correct. 2023, it's seventy percent correct, beginning of the year. So that, to me, is just showing, again, that the kids are retaining everything that they've learned, that, you know, pandemic recovery is really kind of starting to wane. And so that's another sign in the right direction for us in ELA. And then we have our MCAS scores up here. Like math, the grade-five continues to show some challenges with that transition. But, you know, I'm feeling confident with the Empowering Writers, connecting the fourth and the fifth grade. The fifth-grade teachers are reporting that kids, again, are coming with a lot of knowledge about the program and feeling really confident about the kids' writing. And then sixth grade is continuing to make strong gains. Seventh grade is a highlight year for us with MCAS. The kids really do perform consistently, really well in the seventh grade. And eighth grade, it has a strong showing above the state as well. Seventh and eighth grade this year are continuing to start to implement the Empowering Writers Program. Last year, we started K-6, and they're going to be working on that this year as well. So I'm excited to see just the continued progress that the kids show with this consistency, K-8 with the writing. I think there's one more. Yes. And then the last slide was just the grade-five ELA. And although, if you look between 2022 and 23, you'll see that we've increased over the state one percent. Thirty-five percent is still low, but we're heading in the right direction. And, you know, I talk a lot about the writing piece, that during the pandemic, kids may have read at home. During the pandemic, nobody was writing at home. So there's a lot more work to do there. But I feel really confident with Empowering Writers and the work that the teachers are doing to increase the amount of writing that kids are doing in the classroom, that we're going to continue to see this progress in all grades, including fifth grade.
All right, so switching, yes.
Before you go there, can you expand any more on the transit, the fifth-grade transition and that dip? In the math, I know they're different students, but it went down three years in a row, like, not precipitously, but it went down three years in a row. So can you talk, can you talk any more about that or expand on that? Like, I know you said it's because of the transition year and that. Is there anything else about it? Because obviously, the fifth-grade results are from the work done previously, but maybe the transition impacts it some. So I don't know, any more thoughts on what you've analyzed?
Do you want to go? I mean, I think that some of it is just that it's a challenging transition when kids move from one building to the next. And so, you know, the cognitive overload and the demands of the middle school, just sometimes it's, they're just not as maybe, as available for that, that learning because they're dealing with new social situations and just, you know, the, being in the big school, that I think sometimes that comes into play a little bit. I think on the ELA side, the lack of consistency between the three elementary schools falling into one middle school has been a challenge. But now that we're having some more consistency amongst our programs, I think we'll start to see a little bit of a gain there. But it's historically been that way. And I know when middle schools start in sixth grade, they tend to see that dips too. So I think it's just the transition and some of the challenges of moving from the comfort of their neighborhood school into this big building that can be overwhelming.
And I also think a piece of it too, for the math side, is we do have homegrown units of study. We write our own curriculum. And I think that, to be perfectly honest with you, when we analyze this data on the curriculum side, we see what units do we need to beef up? And how can we get kids to be doing tasks that are more, that are richer or sort of like more multi-step? And I think some of that does fall on me. And so we are working, the math specialists and I at the middle school, we are working to sort of give facelifts to certain units that we feel like need them. But it's really good for us to look at which domains do we really need to really be focusing on? And we've been doing that work, so we're hoping to come out better in the future.
Yeah, and I appreciate that answer. I do know transitioning in buildings, and I can see it from the fourth to fifth, totally see it. And then it kind of, it levels, it kind of jumps quickly in that sixth, seventh, right? It kind of, it kind of comes back to equilibrium in a weird way. So it's, so it's just a very interesting phenomenon, which might show the other impact of transitions, why we need web teams and things like that too, to create stability in transitioning, just baseline existence beyond testing, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for addressing a little further.
Yes. So just moving on to science. When I talked to you at the end of last year, we had some findings for elementary science that we felt like we weren't giving the time to elementary science that it deserved or that we wanted to. And it wasn't because we didn't want to teach science. We love teaching science. It was a time issue. Coming out of that, we had hoped to sort of make some recommendations around doing something with an elementary STEM course, class, something like that. So this year, we have visited several schools and districts who have elementary science programs. We want to gain a better understanding of what's working elsewhere, what's working around us. And we have really compiled a lot of interesting data and a lot of interesting anecdotal stories that we want to talk to you about. We want to come back and share those findings and those ideas very specifically with you at another time. Coming off of the review, we have packed, so we've done summer work for homegrown units of study, and we have also infused those units into our ELA blocks in elementary so that students have that background knowledge of science that actually goes through the pacing guide of their ELA block. What's sort of missing is some of those hands-on experiments, the labs, things like that, that we just would love to get back to be able to do in our elementary classrooms. You will see here that the fifth grade is a bit below the state in their science MCAS. The test is testing third, fourth, and fifth-grade standards. So those fifth-grade teachers are feeling that lack of science in elementary. Our eighth grade is above the state. The test is sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade standards. You'll notice, you know, there has been a bit of a dip in eighth grade, but the ahern has been so, you know, they've been so consistent with wanting more Project Lead the Way courses, and they've valued that so much that I'm just so proud to tell you, and I think I told you this at the review, we've put in two more courses this year in fifth grade, Patterns in the Universe and Earth's Water and Interconnected Systems. Those are Project Lead the Way courses that are happening in grade five. We're so excited about that. So we have, we are committed to trying to get kids to do more hands-on. The last thing I just wanted to show you, these are the Earth and Space domains. You'll see them for fifth grade, you'll see them for eighth grade. You'll notice fifth grade is below the state, that's the red on the side. But you'll notice eighth grade is not, because those students have had consistent science every single day. every single day in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. What you're seeing is, is more inconsistent teaching. The science MCAS, last I'll say, is being, like Dr. Burrows said, is being reimagined and overhauled. In 2025 is the pilot year of that new assessment, which is going to be more performance-based. I have joined STEM Ambassador's program to be more familiar with this assessment. I'm excited that I get to learn more about what this assessment is going to be. I'm going to bring all my findings back to Foxborough and talk to the teachers all about the new assessment. But like Dr. Burrows said, I think it's going to match our pedagogical model so much better. Performance-based assessments versus discrete questions is always going to be better for our kids, because that's the way we teach. So I'm excited about that, and there's opportunities for growth for sure. But we're on it.
Just before we move on to the next slide, I do want to share that the STEM Ambassador program that Ms. Hendrickson is participating in, you had to apply to, to be a part of that program. And she was competing against science teachers, curriculum directors, department heads across the state. And she was selected by the state to be one of those STEM ambassadors. So we're really happy that, that she is going to be bringing her learning back to us. But it is a huge achievement to be recognized by the state and, and be a part of that group. So we're really excited about that. And, and not surprised that the state chose her.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. And I noticed in the school improvement plans, there was the Project Lead the Way was mentioned. I had actually highlighted that, too. So it kind of linked in tonight with the presentation.
Well, it's interesting. They're using it a lot in those elementary programs. I'll be back.
Yeah. That's very good. Well, thank you for all the work on this. And I, I don't even know if people appreciate how difficult it is to keep squeezing more time and more things into, into the box, right? The box is pretty full about what we do each and every day at the elementary level and, and every grade level. And so now we, we have to do an assessment of tests or something, and then, okay, let's do this. But let's do this or take that away. It's always a, it's, it's a challenge to really investigate the best way to do it and, and try to fit it all in. So when I hear this, I'm, I'm excited, but I'm like, oh, I know how tough it is to pull it off. So thank you for the work.
Okay, moving on to high school.
All right, good evening. So here, we can see that we performed better than the previous year with 66% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations on last year's exam. And those numbers were also above the state averages on last year's exam as well. So that's exciting. Some of the highlights from our analysis of the test items include our, our students scoring well above state averages on sections testing reading for a purpose and analysis and critical thinking skills. So in fact, on many of these items, we're double digits above the state averages. And we're fairly certain that this reflects the time that we spend in our classes doing close reading of texts and teaching thinking routines, because we're hoping that by doing that, we are preparing them for life, not just for the MCAS exam. The next slide shows that writing remains an area for growth for us, although we do see improvements over the previous year in these numbers. We are continuing to focus on in-class writing practice in grades nine and 10, giving students practice with writing on demand to simulate exam conditions. And additionally, this year, we have introduced the single-point rubric throughout all grades and levels. And I've given you a couple of samples of single-point rubrics. It's a little bit different from what we normally picture when we hear the word rubric, with like multiple descriptions of criteria at all different levels. The single-point rubric only describes the criteria for proficiency, and it offers space for teachers to give feedback on each criterion. So because these rubrics only include the target expectations, students have an easier time understanding those expectations, and teachers can offer higher-quality feedback, indicating where students are doing well and where they should focus their efforts. And by placing the emphasis on the feedback and not necessarily the grade, we're hoping that students are better able to utilize the feedback and become stronger writers.
Great. Good evening. I just first want to say, because my first time here in front of you in this role, I'm just, I'm excited for the opportunity to, to step into this role and just can kind of continue to, continue all the work, great work that we've been doing for years. And one thing I kind of want to highlight is something that we've been working on as a department recently. Last year, we, as a whole department, we did a year-long book study on a book called Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. And the, the long and short of it is just, if you want students to be better thinkers, give them something to think about. And a lot of the, the practices include things like you see in those pictures, kids are up at the whiteboard, they're working in, in groups with their peers, and things like the non-permanent nature of using the whiteboards. It helps students become more comfortable with trying stuff out if they're not sure if they're, they're correct yet, right? We, we had been hearing a lot of students saying things like, oh, I'm not going to write that down. I'll wait till we go over it, and I know what, what's right. So, so kind of just trying to, to build those habits of the problem-solving, the perseverance. And we're just, we're excited by the, what we've seen so far. And as we just kind of continue to, to ingrain it into our practices and, and have it be part of our culture, our culture, it's just something that we're going to just keep, keep pushing with going forward. And then hopefully, those, those skills will help them be better prepared for assessments like the MCAS. And overall, we're really excited about our results this past spring. As you can see, in, when combining the exceeding and meeting expectations, we were 19 points above the state, which is, which is really great to see. And on the reverse side of that, obviously, in partially meeting and not exceeding, oh, sorry, not meeting, we were well below the state averages. So just kind of broader view, great to see those, those positive numbers in the upper half. And then digging a little bit more into that, comparing last year to this year, we're also seeing a, a shift within that group of exceeding and meeting from 8% exceeding last year, almost doubling this year, up to, up to 15%. And again, kind of on the opposite end of that, from not meeting expectations, less than half of what it was the year before, down to just 2%. We, kind of, one of our goals going forward is to hopefully start to see a little bit more of a shift from, from the partially meeting and not meeting up into that, that upper half, because that's where we're, we're still a little bit below with those, like, pre-pandemic numbers. So that's kind of our, one of our goals going forward, to see that, that shift into the upper half of the, those two kind of categories there. And then another highlight for us, looking at every single domain and cluster in the standards, we outperformed the state on every single one of them. As you can see, a lot of those, those results were, were double digits above the state. And one that I have highlighted there is congruence. I had it because that was the only one, we were actually below the state last year. We were down 3%. And then actually, this year turned into one of our biggest strengths. And I think that's kind of just evidence to the work that we've been doing as a department, looking at the, the item analysis, discussing how we can improve on, on those weaker areas and things of that nature. So it kind of just validates that, that what we've been doing is worthwhile, and kind of helps just kind of spur us forward on now identifying, okay, what are the next things that we, we could maybe look at a little bit more? And the other noteworthy thing about this, when considering which of the domains are weighted more heavily on the exam, so for example, like congruence, like I mentioned, expressing geometric properties with equations and quantities, those are three of the four largest domains on the exam. And in all of those, we're, we're double digits above the state. So on, on those kind of meteor sections, those are, are some of our strengths. And then interpreting functions is, is the other one that is one of the larger chunks of the exam. And yes, it's great to be six points above the state there, but that's kind of targeted as one of our, our focuses, kind of going forward as, let's try and really improve on that one. Not to say that the other ones aren't as important, but the ones that are only 2% of the exam are as much of, of the focus for us. And again, having a four-year math requirement at the high school, we're just, we're excited. Even when they're, they've taken the MCAS, we, we still get them for another couple of years to, to build those transferable skills that they'll, they'll be able to take on wherever they end up after that.
Thank you. I should probably have you introduce yourself to the public that's watching this. I should have had everyone, but you're the newest, so you win the prize, I guess.
Yeah, so I'm Tim Johansson Meyer. I, I've worked my whole career in Foxborough, and I think that is just another thing that, again, speaks, we, we say it all the time, but it speaks to kind of the culture that we have here in terms of having the opportunity to grow even as leaders within the school community and to, to take on other roles. So you'll probably be hearing from me for a while, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. So onward to science. And I know we call it the Science Grade 10 Test, but I do want to point out that it's the ninth graders who take the Science Grade 10 Test, which is biology for our students here in Foxborough. As Dr. Burrows had mentioned, we did have statewide, there was a small dip in science, but, and we experienced that in the district as well. But I think that a dip from 67% of meeting and exceeding expectations to 64% of meeting and exceeding expectations from one year to the next isn't particularly exciting. And I could also highlight that we had from 9 to 11% in exceeding expectations, and pretend like that was something to be super excited about, too. But I think we're looking at a small fluctuation in small numbers. And if it becomes a trend, that's something to be worried about. But for one year, it's okay either way. But overall, students are doing well. And the other thing is that we are concerned about those students who are not meeting expectations. And even though it isn't that many of them, it's something that we should focus on. And you heard earlier about the co-teaching that's going on at the high school. And that's a big change that we've made for this year, is that we now have, all of our students are in fully-inclusive classrooms with a co-teaching model, where they will have one year of biology. And prior to this year, the biology students were in sub-separate classrooms, where they took two years to go through the biology curriculum. And so we're hoping that with that fully-inclusive model, that we're going to see an uptick for those students in all of their MCAS scores, whether it's from the not-meeting expectations up or even in the meeting to the exceeding area. So this very strange graph is every item on the Science MCAS. And in the blue, we have our students, and in the pink, we have the state. And you'll notice that I've highlighted that there were two questions where we did not beat the state. And while that is disappointing, the first thing I did was go and look at what kind of questions they were. And historically, I mean, historically, like 10 years historically, our best area has been in ecology. And we've always attributed that to recency, because ecology is the last unit that's taught in May and June, right before MCAS on the 5th of June. And one of those questions was in ecology, and one of them was in molecules to organisms. But you can see that we've done much better in heredity this last year. And thinking about what our action points were last year, we talked, when I was here last year, I talked to you about our focus on doing deep-dive reading and really working on those analysis skills for students, looking at, being able to read graphs, interpret tables, interpret passages, and rather than focusing on learning any one specific fact here, one specific fact there. And we put a lot of time into that last year. But that means we didn't have quite as much time at the end for ecology either. So we may have had recency, but we may need to work on pacing a little bit. But I was really thrilled, because not only are those, the topics, but neither of those questions is a constructed response question. Both of those questions are multiple choice. It's a fact that just didn't get highlighted particularly well in some classrooms, and it's not a thing to panic about. I think if those were both constructed response, open response type questions, I'd be much more concerned. But our work on analyzing data and our work on arguing from evidence is showing in the fact that we do have high points in those constructed response questions as well. And apparently, our willingness to slow down and put some focus on those bigger topics in the middle of the year with molecules to organisms and heredity is paying off. And then we have one more here. And this is about the things that we're doing moving forward and our plans going forward. You'll remember, I saw you last spring at the end of our curriculum review cycle, when we went ahead and decided that we would be focusing on the American Modeling Teachers Association's modeling cycle for chemistry and physics courses, as well as the OpenSciEd approach for biology. And we have not fully implemented all of those. It's a slow rollout over five years. But all of our teachers are working on using questioning techniques and driving question boards. You'll remember that we've talked about the question formulation technique as something that we worked on as a district for the last several years with many PDs. And this integrates really well with the QFT. We've been working on our driving question board, driving question boards, and working on our anchoring phenomena routines. And both the modeling cycle and the OpenSciEd approach have those anchoring phenomena routines, whether it's an anchoring phenomena that's based in an experiment, or an anchoring phenomena that's based on a reading passage and learning about a phenomena out in the world at large. And then returning to those questions and going, which questions have we answered? Which questions are new questions because of the things that we've learned about through our experiments, through our reading, and through our analysis up until this point? And getting to the end of as many or as all of those questions, if possible, that the students generate for themselves.
Thank you for all of that.
Yeah. Okay, and the grand finale is our national assessment.
Can I ask math, and only because I was at the conference last, last week. I went to a session on VR, virtual reality. And, and it was stunning, it was fascinating. I just don't know where, how it fits in, but they were talking about, you know, how to place it in schools. And, and actually, they did a VR with math, where they, someone was going to have the goggles on and had to move some chemicals around in, in portions and stuff. And it was the whole move in the hand. So I was very intrigued by it. I don't think it's an easy thing to go to, and they were talking about the dangers of it and everything. But boy, I can see it in some things. I can see virtual reality and history, and maybe some science, you know, and, or some of the ones, you know, walking around in a rainforest in VR. And, and I don't know, I don't.
The augmented reality where we can walk around and see things in our actual environment and then get the extra information about it, too.
Yeah, I was just thinking about them. And I, I don't know how to do it, but I was very, I was totally intrigued by it. And it was very interesting. And I don't know where it goes. So with all things running, so, there you go. Another thing to add into the timeframe that we don't have. There we go.
There's only, they were already stressing about how there's not enough minutes in the day.
I just said that. Did I recognize it? Not enough minutes in the day. Now we're going to put on goggles. So I'm sorry. Bad idea.
That is cool, though.
It is. It was really cool, actually. So, sorry. Sorry. Go ahead, S.
Thank you. All right. So we'll start with some PSAT data, and then how that relates to our SAT data. So when we look at 2020 versus 2021 versus 2022, there's been a decline each year for our students, and I'll talk about that in just one second. But then we also look at 21 versus 22, that we're above the state averages in both those years. When we look at 2020, that was when the pandemic hit. It was an opt-in for us at Foxborough High School. So we didn't have our entire junior class taking it that year. We had maybe about 80 students spread out throughout the cafeteria and like the cafeteria hallway taking the test. So I don't know how the rest of the state administered their exams, whether they did things similarly, whether it's a much smaller sample size. But that could indicate why our scores were a little higher that year, because it was a different population, and why maybe the state's scores were higher that year. When we look at 21, 22, and then when we just took the PSATs this past October, which is our 23 test, which we don't have the, obviously, the results for yet, that's our entire junior class. So our numbers will shift a little bit, because we're having, we're not having 80 students opting in. We're having 200 students or so taking the, the test. I, I do like that in the past couple of years, we have seen, even though there has been a little bit of a slight decline, that we are above the state average. And when we jump to the next slide to compare it to SATs, when we look at the PSAT data, in 2022, we were at a 995, which would be the 2023 SAT, and we're at 1142. So it, it doesn't necessarily perfectly translate, but ultimately, the PSAT is a practice, getting students ready for, for the actual SAT. So when we look at the mean scores from 21, 22, 23, we're at 1122, jumped up a little bit to 1154, down slightly to 1142. So we're kind of in the same ballpark, which is good. And I think part of that is year-to-year, student-to-student, we have some differences, strengths and weaknesses, things like that. But I also think that when we look at our data based on the subjects, it's evidence-based reading and writing. reading and writing and math, but it's more than that. There's science components, there's social studies, there's a critical thinking students are getting from all their subjects, and that's really a testament to our teachers and the hard work they put in. I know our students are really at, have a huge benefit of being a Foxborough High School with, we have three of our department heads here who do a really good job focusing on the departments to get the best out of their teachers, which in turn gets the best out of the students. So I do think that as things pass through time, we're going to continue to see some ups and downs like we always will, but I think we're being able to kind of ride, ride the kind of that wave of COVID over the past few years because of the teachers we have at Foxborough High School. I've talked about this a couple of times in the past as well, that with colleges being test optional, our numbers are going to start changing a little bit, and we're not going to be necessarily compare them apples to apples because it's going to be slightly different populations of students taking the exams. So from my, this is my second year back in the guidance department, and I've seen a decrease of students taking SATs, and I've seen a pretty significant decrease of students taking the SATs more than once. It used to be two, three, four times. You'll still get some of the students who will do that, but now it's, I've taken it once, and that's it.
How fast do you think it's going to drop? I mean, I saw this coming years ago.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, I think, I mean, College Board is a powerhouse, so I don't think the SATs are necessarily going to go away, but they're going to look different, I think, over the next handful of years. I just don't know how it's going to look yet.
Yeah, I wish, I wish, I'm not saying we have to predict it, but I'm not surprised that you said that at all, because I think years ago, they were starting to talk in that direction, that it's not necessarily indicative of success.
Right, right.
A whole bunch of other things that need to go into the mix.
And it used to be like.
And that's not the important one.
It used to be the second most important thing. It was a transcript, and then it was test scores, and now that's optional, which I think is a good thing for students. I mean, they're more than a four-hour test on a Saturday, you know?
All right. Agreed.
So when we look at the three-year averages for us, we've remained above the state, and then it used to be on national testers, now it's all testers, so it's national and international combined, but we've remained above the state and the all testers in mean evidence-based reading and writing, and then again in math. So I'm pleased with the SATs. We didn't include ACT data this year because our sample size is very, very small. We had 17 students take the ACTs last year, which is, ACTs have always been small for us, but 17 is like an all-time low. So we can't really necessarily compare 18 of our, probably our highest achieving students taking the ACTs to our previous data, which was a kind of a cross-section of students, when we'd have maybe 80 to 100 students in a class. But we will jump ahead to APs. So when we look at the score, the numbers of students over the past three years, some of the numbers are going to be a little different based on the amount of students in enrollment in the classes. So in 21, we had 206, then it was 192, and jumped back to 204. So that could, I'm not super concerned about the number of students. I think the next column is really interesting, because we look at the 206 students in 2021, we had administered 426 exams. In 2022, we had 192 students and 417 exams, and then in 2023, 204 students with 486 exams. So when we look at really a two-student decrease from 21 to 22 was a 60-test increase. So we're having more students take multiple exams.
So that was going to be my question. So the first one is, one student could be taking five different AP courses. So it's, they count as one.
Right.
But their exams are, it's still five exams.
Five, yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
And then when we look at the number of tests scored out of three or better, again, our scores are great, our numbers are great, we have 343 students, and I actually am kind of surprised by that because typically, when you have more students and more tests taken, your numbers might kind of drop a little bit for the, like the scores. But they did, the students have done a great job, and when we look at the percentages, very similar. And I think a lot of that has to do, like I said, with the SATs and our standardized testing that way. It's because of our teachers. They really work the students, get the best out of them, and I think we've been, we've all been here a long time, and we know what it takes to be a Foxborough High School student, and we talk about it all the time, of how can we be better educators to make our students better people? How can we make them better students? So we're all committed to doing our best to make the experience of Foxborough High School students more than just a test score. We know that the AP courses and the AP classes, like the in-the-classroom kind of meat is really the most important stuff, and we know that there's going to be students who, and I think I said this last year, students who are going to take an AP exam, and we know they're not going to do well, but they're challenging themselves to take the class, they're stepping out of their comfort zone, and that's okay. We'll kind of, we'll eat the one or two for the handful of students who are challenging themselves for those experiences, and I think it's worth it.
Well, if you're still up watching, that's a very important statement.
Yes.
That these AP numbers are talking about accessibility. It's accessible, it's open to people, it's being encouraged to take the most challenging curriculum they possibly can, and that's the opportunity. At the end of the day, I'm not sure the number, the one, two, three, four, or five, is the critical problem at all, but the number three shows it. There's more people succeeding at that three level, there's more tests being given, so this is great. This is great because this is, this shows advanced expectations and ability and willingness for the educators to challenge.
And it's all about balance. You know, there are some students, like Rob, like you said, there's some students who can do five without thinking, and there's other students who have a really hard time with one. And we understand that the job of a student is to be a student, but they're also people, and they have jobs, and they have friends, and they have families, and they play sports and involve in music and involve in activities, and they need to account for all of that when they're taking these courses. So as counselors, we all kind of push students, like really kind of meet your maximum, but also understand, like, you as a student can juggle all these, but can you as a person juggle these? Maybe not. And then you maybe back it off a little bit, just to find, find what's best for each student. Do you have any questions for me about anything?
Any questions?
No, this is a lot of data, and, but I appreciate your thorough consideration of the data and how carefully you planned your forward plans on what you're going to do instead of having any knee-jerk reaction to it. And then you do this every year. Like, this is incredible. That's like a vast amount of time. I really appreciate, like I said, the time and the thought and the care that goes into all this and to planning the future and how you're going to move forward with the students. And again, the success that we're doing, it's showing, the numbers, we're seeing it. Like, you know, yeah, we see dips here and there, but I think we're on the right track. I really appreciate you presenting the data. I enjoyed seeing it.
Can I just ask, because I don't believe we went down the line and introduced ourselves individually.
Yeah, probably should.
So would you mind doing that just for a moment before we move on to questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen McKinnon, ELA Social Studies, Title I Curriculum Director.
K to eight, sorry.
Noel Hendrickson, Math/Science Curriculum Director, K to eight.
Alyssa Macharnik, 912 Science Department Head, and liked him also my entire career here in Foxborough.
Shannon Wazaluski, I'm the 9 to 12 English Department Head, also my entire career in Foxborough.
Again, Tim Durant Meyer, the 9 to 12 Math Department Head.
I'm Andy Servideo, I'm the Guidance Director at the high school, and I have been here my entire career as well.
Wow. Very good.
How about your retention?
I've had three jobs at Foxborough High School during my time. It's all right.
That's awesome. My question is, who's going to walk us through this piece?
What we, what we did do is we kept that table of contents that you had last year, just in case you wanted to quick reference that data, and you can always, if you have any additional questions, always follow up, and I'm sure that between, between the team over here and myself, we can answer those as well. I know it's a lot of data to dig through, and it's late.
It's great. No, I appreciate all of it, too. What I, so what I appreciate most about all of this is we still continue to acknowledge the impact of, you know, two years ago, and the gap is closing, clearly, and it's closing because people are being mindful of what needs, what it takes to close that gap. When we're talking about some of these discrepancies, and we're talking about a class of 193 students, you know, you're, sometimes we're talking four students, right? Which is not a great percentage, and you are going to see fluctuations because the makeup of the class is different every year. And so sometimes it's four students, sometimes it's five students that are exceeding expectations. What I appreciate about all of this is that you continue to think about the entire picture and the entire group of students, not those individual students, because those are small shifts that are just natural. And the thoughtfulness that goes into, into preparing the kids for not the examinations, but for the work and for the long-term success that comes out of that work, I think is really the best part of it, because we don't talk, we don't, you know, we, we, at least I hope that we're not focusing on what score our kids get. We focus on what successes they're setting themselves up for, and that really comes very strongly in this message from all of y'all tonight, so thank you.
Can I just say something really quickly? Because I respect so much the people that have worked in Foxborough their whole lives. As somebody who hasn't worked in Foxborough their whole life.
What?
It is so.
How did you get here?
There's a lot of different permeations to that, but having worked in different districts that really did live and die by their test scores, it is so refreshing to work in a district that really isn't all about that score, because we can't reduce kids to a number. And I have worked in places where that was not the pace, and it's so refreshing to be in a place that truly walks that walk of we care about kids globally, all about them, and it's not about this one score. This is a loud score because it's public, but it's not the be-all, end-all. And so I just, I appreciate that so much about being in this district.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, there we go.
From that virtual prom in the rainforest.
Excellent. Well, no, but.
I just joke.
He's teasing me about my VR in the rainforest.
Because she said you had a furball, so I thought it was like a, tree frogs don't have fur.
I think that's really cool. Thanks for sharing. That is cool.
I've put one of those headsets on before, and it's amazing what the technology can do, and there's all sorts of possibilities with virtual field trips and just, you know, a lot of things that we can put at the fingertips of kids that they may not necessarily be able to do, you know, go explore a government building or go to the rainforest with those VR headsets. It's really cool. It's cool what they can do.
Yeah, it was great. They gave, actually gave a really great example, which I thought was good, because I think in history, it could be great. You could actually put the headset on, maybe, and walk up into the apartment for Aunt Frank.
Wow.
Right? So you put the VR headset on, and you got to go up a stair, you got to go up a staircase, you got to see this, you got to see the tight quarters, and you're actually right there. And then they talked about the implementation of it and how you do it safely, because you kind of want to walk and move, because you're walking and moving, but you can't walk and move because you could walk into a wall or something. So it was just very, very interesting, very interesting.
Cool.
Next on the agenda is acceptance of donations. I think you all have the letter in there for an IORIO charitable foundation donation of $7,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Someone like to move to acceptance of the donation?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude the donation from the IORIO charitable foundation in the amount of $7,000.
I second.
Motion by Sarah, seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, accepting that donation with gratitude, 4-0, thank you very much. And is there a second donation as well?
There is. Can I make a motion that we accept with gratitude the donation from the Charles G. Taylor PTO in the amount of 37, 36.77 and 40 cents to the Taylor School gift account?
I second.
Seconded by Michelle. So motion by Sarah, seconded by Michelle. No further discussion, I don't think. All in favor? That's a 4-0 vote as well. Thank you. I guess we're there. We made it to the end of the meeting.
Oh, my pen just ran out.
You can use my pen.
Got it.
You got it. Notification of community events? Any notifications? There we go. There we go.
So I'm going to start off by talking about community cousins, which Dr. Donovan mentioned. I'm actually a community cousin. I'm really excited. I met my community cousin last week, and we're really excited about that relationship and fostering that. But Shantel Willie actually sent out an invitation for this Saturday from 12 to 2:30. Foxborough High will be having a MEKO there is a convention, and Foxborough High will have a MEKO table, and she's inviting anybody who'd like to come and visit and proud of Foxborough and proud of the MEKO program, and all prospective MEKO students will be there. If you wanted to come and learn about community cousins, it's at the Reggie Lewis Track and Athletic Center in Boston, so I just wanted to mention that. And we do have, recreation does have an exciting event coming up. We are having Light Up Town on November 25th from 4 to 7 p.m. So, and thank you again to all of our volunteers, National Honor Society, community warriors who continue to step up and show up at the events and help make them the success that they are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle, any?
Well, tonight, CPAC held a workshop on managing challenging behaviors. CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, they tend to meet the second Tuesday of every month, so I tend to miss them because, you know, as Joe has mentioned, we struggle between, you know, coming to school committee or to CPAC. But I do want to put it out there, CPAC does meet usually the second Tuesday of every month, and unfortunately, because of our large gap, I couldn't mention the workshop prior to this meeting. You know, mentioning it on the day of doesn't do anyone any good, but I do want to mention that they are continuing to do functions, and to please check their Facebook pages to keep up to date. There's also other useful links for other meetings or seminars that are going on that are outside of Foxborough to keep in touch with that as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just on that note, I, it's nice that we provide this calendar update for people, but I do want to remind everybody, if you've stayed this long at the meeting, that you could get calendar updates by checking out the multitude of websites that are available. The Rec Department has their own website. Check it out. You don't have to wait for Sarah to give you an update. But all this is available to everybody, but, and then the other thing I would like to add, it's not a community event, but I would like to, as another item, I know that the three of you attended the MAS C conference. I think it might be interesting if we did have a report out, since Brett and I were not able to attend or chose not to attend, if we did have a future meeting, had a report out on some of the highlights or things that you think might be important or pertinent to the work that we're doing here in Foxborough. I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Rob. I just want to make a correction. I was not able to attend last week, and I actually brought the guide. I think that that's a great point, because the last two years, I've gotten to go, and there's so much content that you get when you're at that conference. So I'd love, Minnie, not that I'm giving anyone homework, but I, thank you for saying that, because it would be great to get just a little snapshot of what it was like and maybe some highlights.
I'll bring my VR goggles.
Yeah. We'd like it, we'd like it in reality, not virtual.
You could all put a goggle on and travel down to the Hyannis Conference Resort with me.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Good idea. Thank you. I don't have a notification of a community event, but more to thank the community for an event. I attended the field hockey event last week. It is a great field hockey game, of which the Foxborough team won, but what I was just most impressed by, when it happens, it's very obvious to me how great the student section was in cheering on the players. There was a lot of people there at the event, and there was a big student section from the other schools as well, but I just thought our students were great. I experienced that last year in a lot of basketball games and games I've gone to, but I encourage our public that when you attend events, whether it's the upcoming football game or whatever it is in the winter, that we continue to be great, positive fans, to make the events a great community event, to support great athleticism and the right thing to do, and probably not yelling and screaming and berating people is probably not the thing to do. So I love it when we have a great audience, and it makes a great event. So thank you all for being that in the community. Anything else from anyone else? Dr. Burtis?
Just want to thank Ms. Gracia. I know she's watching at home.
That's right.
So she'll be helping out in the interim when we, and take that role and move it forward. So she'll be doing that for a little while longer, and we're greatly appreciative.
Thank you. Dr. Burrows?
I'd like to thank Ms. Gracia from home, too.
Thank you. Mr. Yerkes, anything?
No.
Good. A motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. All in favor of adjourning? 4-0 vote. Meeting of the Foxborough School Committee is adjourned.